Alrighty, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of September 2nd, 2021. We have a fairly short agenda this evening. And the first item on the agenda is continuation of, excuse me, special permit hearing. So I move that we reopen the special permit hearing to consider the application of Lori A. Robbins, trustee of the Emerald Lake Nominee Trust for property located at 20 Mackinac Shores Road, and to waive the reading of the notice to be incorporated into the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Lori?
Okay, to return to where we were.
Wait, see this?
Is it a good place to?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know if this is my back to the, anyway. So when we were last here, there was a question about why the prior mass had been calculated and why the new application showed a different mass. And it was explained that the previous architect had not included the second floor uninhabited space. And we brought to your attention that the definition for zoning purposes of mass, it says the floor area shall not include uninhabitable basement utility space but shall include porches and deck space. And I think-
And that's in ours.
Pardon me?
That definition is in our bylaws.
That is in the Stockbridge zoning bylaw. And the dimensional requirements that we're supposed to address with your board to demonstrate that this is not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity is to demonstrate that, well, first of all, one of the things, among others, is that the mass will not exceed the existing mass. So the calculation, we had to demonstrate why the mass was now shown as 2,000. And in fact, I did call Pam Sandler and asked her. She said, "Oh, I was just using the mass, the definition of habitable space in the building code, but that's not the zoning definition for mass." So she conceded that that should have been included. So the current applicant, application has included the floor area as defined in your zoning bylaw. For all floor areas shall be included except uninhabitable basement utility space. So that's the explanation. And I think you wanted further clarification from the building inspector. And I did speak to Ned Baldwin, but if you want to address any conversations, if you've had any conversations with Ned Baldwin, to confirm that the calculation is accurate as we have shown in this application.
I know that. Patrick had some questions. So Patrick did come in and we did speak to legal and to Ned.
Yes, we had a-
Patrick, go ahead with, because you-
Look, I am comfortable that you're following the letter of the rules. I mean, and that's all you're required to do. I mean, there's absolutely no reason why you shouldn't build as big a house as you want to build based on what the rules allow you to do. And none of these, I have a couple of comments, but, and none of them apply really to, are in any way critical of the work you've done because, you know, Donna and Ned and Michael helped educate me and perhaps the other members of the board as to why this follows a somewhat arcane definition of, you know, mass versus, you know, kind of the square footage of the house. I do know that the intent, and we cannot do a special permit based on intent, but the intent of the Lake and Pond overlay district was to do really two things. It was to protect the environment around the lake, and it was to make sure that we didn't end up with so much density on these hundreds of very small lots that we have that it overwhelmed the aesthetic of the lake. And so the good folks at Stockbridge passed this bylaw that basically said, I think in their minds, yeah, we don't want, you know, we don't want a lot of giant houses replacing small houses. And we have this definition of mass. And so that means that when we permit it, the basement isn't included, though many, many, many houses before this one, and I'm not suggesting what Jeff Willer won't do, I'm just saying, as an observation fact of Ned's, many folks convert their basements to living areas once these houses are built. So that's right there, it's a third of the bigger house, all right? And many other folks will take, you know, space that might have been storing some boxes from 20 years ago and say, "Okay, this was, you know, uninhabited storage space, and that's another 700 square feet," or whatever. Well, we, the bottom line is where we end up, is we go from a house that was around 1,200 feet to a house where, you know, should the basement get converted, which is absolutely fine, because that's the right within the way the rules are written, a house that's easily three times that. And, and so, you know, I, this is not a political process. We are here to render a verdict based on following the bylaws. I will say, though, that this board has every right to promulgate regulations that clarify these bylaws. So one of the things I think that we might want to consider is, and this was something that Ned and Donna suggested today, for example, saying that to qualify as unfinished basement space, we, this board could issue regulations saying that it has to be unfinished space with a ceiling height less than seven feet. Because anything with a ceiling height less than seven feet can never get past the building code. So it can never be then a third bigger because everybody's been just converting their basements. I thought that was a pretty good idea on Donna's part, but mostly what I want is I want us to kind of not only render fair, you know, you know, fair rulings, if you will. And in that case, I don't think there's any doubt that we're going to approve this project. And I, and I don't think it would even fair to attach a condition to his basement because many applicants before him have done the exact same thing in terms of converting their basements into something different once the permits are all issued and the house is built. I do think that, you know, for me, anyway, I really think there's two choices that we should take as a town. One is, you don't like a bylaw repeal it or change it. Or two, if something needs to be clarified, I think if it's within our, the boundaries of our rights, we should clarify it.
Well, Patrick, we're here to approve or not approve this particular special permit. We're not here to discuss the bylaws. What I can say is that the board can set conditions on a special permit.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I would like to make a motion. And my comment would be that since the applicant has characterized, Jeff last week said the basement space would be used as storage, paddleboards, kayaks, et cetera. So since the applicant has characterized the basement space as uninhabitable and it has not been included in the mass calculations, I move that we grant the special permit application of Lori A. Robbins, trustee of the Emerald Lake Nominee Trust for property located at 20 Mackinac Shores Road, on the condition that the basement space be used solely for storage and utility, utility space in compliance with the application representation.
I would rather have a conversation about that.
Pardon me?
I would rather have a conversation about that.
Okay.
And, and I'm, I'm in a butter, and, and I'd like to comment as well before you vote. I mean-
The hearing of the law, is that some-
And I have another issue with, a technical issue, so before you approve it-
Sorry, yeah. I jumped ahead, but that was in response to your comments. But yes, any other public comments that we have?
I mean, you look at the plans-
Excuse me?
It is not storage space.
Excuse me, can you identify yourself? I can't see your name.
My, my name is Bill Luttrell, and my husband is Thomas Finan. We are the Butters of the North. And, you know, I just, you know, I'm not really opposed to the overall plan, but I, you know, to, to have the fiction that this new third level, the new basement level is, is storage space, it's got walkout, sliding glass doors, if you look at the plans, to a new terrace, I mean, that's not storage space, I'm sorry. We have storage space under our living room, which has a five-foot-high ceiling, you know, it's for boats, it's in the wintertime, it's for tables, you know, that's not what's being proposed in this design. You know, I just, that, that bothers me, you know. I just got to make that point.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I would like to respond, respond to your concern there. The reason the application had stated that the proposed mass was going to be less than 2,130 square feet, the existing mass is 2,130 square feet. What I would propose as a condition that would be reasonable and acceptable to the applicant is that the total mass of this dwelling shall not exceed 2,130 square feet. But just a blanket prohibition against making anything, making anything inhabitable in the basement is regulating what's interior. And Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 3, says that you cannot regulate the interior of a, of a structure.
However, the, the application itself is actually representing that that entire level was uninhabitable.
And you can, you can condition this to say that the final building plans, or in the future, for instance, if were he to choose to make a portion of that habitable, currently what's habitable, I think it's about 1,700 square feet? The total shown projected building.
1,605.
1,605. But in the future, were he to want to, which is well below the existing 2,130 square feet, were he to want to make some portion of that walkout habitable, I would suggest that he doesn't have to come back here to ask to have, this is, this is a cubic area that we're presenting as an area, 2,130 potential square feet of habitable space. And you don't do finished working drawings until you have a permit whether you can build or not. So the final, final, final building permit and drawings still need to be sketched out. And if he decides to, instead of putting a loft up there, or this size loft, maybe he wants to put some of that, that habitable space in the basement, as long as the exterior cubic area is no more than the existing, former existing, that should all be, this is all the town should regulate. You can certainly add a condition that anything he does inside that cube shall not exceed, any, any portion that's habitable shall not exceed 2,130 square feet. That makes sense.
But your own-
But preventing them from ever, in the future, being able to use anything in the basement is, is regulating the interior.
Chuck, your thoughts?
I'm okay with that, I think. It's just, I mean, the outside dimensions are the same.
Footprint's the same, the exterior-
It's not changing.
You're okay with what Lori said, or what-
Yes.
And so-
I mean, answer right now, I mean, I'm not saying yes and no, but I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Jackson, first floor and second floor total square footage were what?
It's 1,600.
That's the 1,600?
Yep.
Okay.
So you got 400 square feet.
But I'm not ready to-
I'm just talking. So with 400 square feet in the basement, that could be habitable?
Yeah, up to, yeah, up to 2,130 square feet.
Okay.
About 500 square feet, roughly.
And the one thing that wasn't clear, and I think I asked you before, I don't know that I got an answer, was how much, what's the delineation of the utility area?
In the basement?
Yeah.
That's, that hasn't been determined at this time.
Okay.
The whole basement is, is not counted toward the mass currently, correct?
Currently, no. But there is no mass figure aside from less than 2,130 square feet noted in this application. The architectural plans included in there, the first and second floor square feet add up to 1,605 square.
What's the footprint again?
Okay.
1,142.
You're saying that with two floors, you only get up to 1,600?
Because the second floor is half, the loft.
The second floor is the basement area that's open to the loch. And the, the coverage of the proposed house is actually about 10 square feet less than the previous house at 1,133 square feet.
Right. Which is, what's the other sticking point, is that the, the upper floor can't be more than 50%?
And that, and that's what they're projecting.
And that is the plan.
Yes, that is the plan. So what I'm suggesting is, in the future, were he to want to make some portion of the basement, he could not, I believe mathematically, you could not make the entire basement habitable because you would then exceed 2,130 square feet. Okay.
Yes.
So that's not possible. But were he to want to make a portion of it, a little room?
Lori, this is not true. I mean, the fact is that all over town for years, according to Ned, we met this morning, folks often get permits like this, and then, once the permits are in place and the house is built, they take the, the basement space and they turn it into inhabitable space. And frankly, I'm not saying that, I, I'm not saying that's wrong, because the town wrote the words in the bylaw, okay? It's not on, it's not on the applicant to figure out how to clarify them. And in fact, I would much prefer to have us clarify this through regulation in the future, because I frankly think it's unfair to where this has been sort of the standard thing that people have been doing for years, for us to impose this condition on this applicant at the last minute doesn't strike me as fair, rather than provide clear clarification where this mass question has been fuzzy for a long time. And that way, going forward, everybody knows what the rules are and what the position of the town is.
Patrick, that's a topic for another-
It isn't, though. I think it's relevant to how we, how we treat this applicant, because you're, you're suggesting, and, and also Lori just told us, Lori, Lori just told us that it's illegal for us, and once again-
She just explained, and I haven't had a chance to respond yet, but I understand what you're saying in terms of the limitation, if we put a condition that limits it to 2,130.
Maximum square foot.
Maximum.
Maximum mass on this building.
Maximum mass.
So he doesn't have to come back here and say, "Well, I want to put a little bathroom downstairs."
Exactly.
So-
I understand.
Is it possible for, when you go for a permit, to have what you're doing in the basement on the plans?
When they go for a building permit-
500 square feet.
They absolutely have to demonstrate what the square footage is. And I did, I did talk to Ned about this.
I don't want to say, okay, down the road, you go 500 feet, and you just do the whole basement. If it's on the building permit, the, the plans are the plans.
Yeah. I did talk to Ned about this, suggesting to him that at some point, the applicant will have to demonstrate to him, when they make the application for a building permit, that all of the mass, it does not exceed 2,130 square feet. Because I told him I was going to suggest that that would be a reasonable condition, so that if he wanted to put something downstairs-
Gotcha.
Doesn't have to come back here.
Yeah, I understand.
500 square feet, that-
And, and that's what Ned was referring to, how it's been going on.
That's just the differential between the 1,600 and the 2,130.
So that's a reasonable condition.
Right. So-
I have one other condition I think we should talk about. It's my understanding, and I could be wrong, that the plans did not contain a, a building height.
The building height is going to be-
On the plan, that's at least what I was told.
I asked for the building height, it was 30-
34 points.
Needs to be on the plan, and if it's on the plan, I want it conditioned. And I want to understand, because it's built on a slope, where they're measuring from, and where they're measuring to-
Building code.
Building code isn't related to these permits, I think we're just finding out, at least, I don't know.
Ned won't sign up for the building permit at the, from the lowest point in the ground to the peak. So it's from a walkout basement to the peak. And Ned won't sign off, it's there.
You can't give me, you can't exceed that. That's the, that's as high as a building can be, is the lowest ground.
And if you go in with a 38-foot building, you're not going to get a permit.
Especially in the table, in the table, when the permit, it shows exactly what the height is. It's the same height as what you already have. And that's all.
Because I asked that last week.
Exactly.
And you gave me the 34 points, something.
That's right. Yeah.
Yeah, he won't give a building permit unless you demonstrate to him.
Yeah.
Right.
And-
Anything else?
Thank you. That gentleman, he wants to say something.
Do we have someone else who wants to make a public comment?
You know, I just, I, I haven't seen on the drawings how that building height is measured, but, you know, if you're satisfied, that's good enough for me.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, make most of the closing public hearing.
You know, I do think I might attend to each of the findings that you have to make, demonstrate into the findings. We, I think we got, we, we were discussing this plan, and then we got stuck on the, the mass calculation, but I don't, I need to finish my, my presentation to demonstrate to you why all of the findings that are required can be met. First, you have to find that the alteration is in compliance with all provisions and the requirements of the bylaw and in harmony with the general intent and purposes. The existing cottage, which was built in 1940s, was in a very deteriorating condition. The upgrading of property in Stockbridge is consistent with Section 1.3 purposes as it will conserve the value of land and buildings within the town. The other finding is, the proposed alteration and reconstruction is essential and desirable to public convenience and welfare at the proposed location. The upgrading of the existing structure is a benefit to the public in that it will increase the assessed value. Provide off-street parking, that's another part of this application. Previously, this little bitty lot did not have any off-street parking, and on this tiny little road, they are providing off-street parking, and it's a much more appealing new house. The alteration and reconstruction will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or to the established or future character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood consists of houses located on pre-existing nonconforming small lots. Many of the other homes in the Mackinac Shore subdivision have been significantly altered or reconstructed to be structures larger than the former smaller cottages. This one will remain on the exact footprint of the former 1940-sized cottage. All finished elements of the architecture of the proposed residence have been proportionally designed to complement its setting and the character of the other homes in the neighborhood so that there will not be any adverse impact on the environment, public health, or safety. The addition will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. The dwelling on the property will remain a single-family dwelling, therefore will not be, there will not be any adverse impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic. The proposed expansion will not overload any public services to that location. The single-family dwelling will continue to be served by water from the Mackinac Water Company. However, the applicant is proposing to drill a new well, so that will be much better. The existing two-bedroom, two-bath residence will be replaced by a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath house that is served by town sewer. The additional bath and a half will not, bedroom and a half will not overload this Stockbridge Town Sewer. So for those reasons, I would suggest that you, I'm going to request that you approve this application for an expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming to change what was formerly on peers to something that's on the exact same footprint and will be no higher than 34.6 feet as measured by the, the building inspector in compliance with the zoning bylaw.
Thank you. All right, I move that we close the hearing for the deliberation of the board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other comments?
No, I, let's see, we have to meet all these criteria for the permit, and which they did. It's a very nice structure building, it's nice design. I have no issues with it.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, I mean, I'm, if, if Lori's comfortable and, and the applicant is comfortable with, with the motion you made, then I'll vote for it.
Okay.
But the motion you made was that the basement can never be inhabited, but I would suggest that the applicant will-
Oh, we need to rephrase it then.
Yeah. This is a new motion.
Yeah.
I mean, the motion we were talking about, yeah.
Yeah, that was never seconded, so.
Someone else will still serve it. Since the applicant has characterized the basement space as uninhabitable and has not been included in the mass calculations, I move that we grant the special permit application of Lori A. Robbins, trustee of the Emerald Lake Nominee Trust for property located at 20 Mackinac Shores, wrote on the condition that the mass of the building not exceed 2,130 square feet. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good work, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a very nice-looking building.
Yeah. I really love it.
It's going to close then before it snows up there, that's a cold place, I've been
up there in the winter.
So, all right. Next on our agenda is to review and vote to remain a single precinct. Do we have the document here?
Yes.
We do have the document in your folder, and I also, if you want to, we can unroll the whole map that shows, but it shows that Stockbridge is, based on our census, we would still be a single precinct district for voting. I mean, it's as small as you can get, obviously, and as far as trying to become anything greater than that, that would have to be something the town would just take on on its own.
I have just one, it's kind of an arcane question, but I, I read the law related to the precinct issue, and, and it only refers to inhabitants. And yet, the state has differentiated between residents and inhabitants. Or is it just in this case, the synonym? Because we have a lot more inhabitants than the, the size of our, you know, our, you know, residential base. And it may actually be even be over 6,000, I don't know.
What?
Over 6,000 what?
I think 6,000 is the cutoff where you have to-
Yeah.
Oh.
And you think we have more?
I don't, I don't know, I'm just saying, I'm just raising it because the law only refers to inhabitants, it doesn't refer to residents.
Right.
Just saying.
Apparently it doesn't-
Oh, 6,000.
They could use definitions, they could use definitions in their laws.
Yeah, I guess, I guess they could, I mean-
I make a motion, we stay as one precinct.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let me see, moving on. So the next thing on the agenda is to just have a brief discussion and overview of employee evaluation process and scheduling. We have Mike's evaluation coming up, but I think it might be nice to talk about, how do we come up with a reasonable schedule for all employees to actually get an annual review? And, you know, what's the process that we'd be using to do that?
So, I know that when, when I was brought on, we talked about, you know, getting to annual reviews. In order to get the annual reviews done and completed in a timely manner to make recommendations for any increases for the next fiscal year, would mean you'd need to do those evaluations in either February or March, of course, would be coming in in September. Didn't give me much time last year to actually, they wouldn't have been efficient recommendations based on such a short period of time. So yes, this year, I am anticipating to engage with the board as we get into the winter evaluations, where the department heads would be done by me, and then employees under the department heads would be done by those, those department heads. And then we would tie those into, I talked about it briefly last year, of setting basically a minimum, so basically for those employees, you know, that are, that are doing a satisfactory job, they, you know, like last year, we briefly had a discussion about doing something around the 1.7, and then if somebody did better than that, because that was cost of living last year, if somebody was significantly above that, do like a half a percentage higher, and then somebody that was above that, do a full percentage higher. And that's something we can explore this, going in. I'm planning on developing application evaluation forms so that I can go through rate and then go from there. So, yeah. So I do think it's, it is important, it is more important to identify, you know, the strength and weakness of the individuals and then what they can improve on, because there's something we can all improve on. I'm expecting that there's things, I know I, there's things I need to improve on, and I'm sure there's-
What, you?
No, yeah. And, and I know, you know, across the board. It doesn't mean just because there's things people need to improve on, that they're not good employees, it's just there are always avenues, and the best we can do is let people know where we think they can improve, or what they can do to improve. I think overall, the town has excellent employees in position, and I think we just need to continue on. So that, that's my plan as far as the overall evaluations as we go forward.
Okay.
We do have to think about how we want to handle contract employees on their basis, because, you know, we'll, we'll have the fire chief coming up, we have the police chief, which we need to, his, his contract, which we did do the notification, but we do need to finalize that. And, you know, those, those happen every three years, so those are a little different, they're structured different by law, so that's what we have to consider.
Well, I mean, the one thing is, certainly for department heads, you know, you kind of have to streamline what you're evaluating them on, is what I was up against thinking about you. And, but it's true of all department heads, that they have specific responsibilities in areas where you want to, you know, be able to like determine how well do we think they're doing, where can they improve, and it's very specific. For other employees, it may be a little more generalized. So, I mean, are you thinking like maybe using one for everyone who is not a department head, basically a standardized form? head, basically a standardized form?
So, I really haven't given it enough thought, I think we're going to need to continue on as this. I do like generally grading on average, on a one to four scale with three being average, because I think a whole bunch of negatives just doesn't help. I think you just identify a negative in an area and then say that needs to be improved, period, and then really identify those steps above, above average. And I think we can come up with a beginning section that's generalized for everybody, but then specifics that would be addressed based on the positions.
Okay.
So, but I, it is something, yeah, I'd like to have in place this year because, you know, last year, we did treat everybody the same still, and the board gave me the latitude to work with people on individualizing their schedule around their needs and around the needs of the town first, then around theirs, which we did across the board, and I think it's been very efficient, I think it's been good for morale here and that, so, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was really useful for morale.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, I thought that worked really well.
Yeah, so just to point out, we have, do have a very good staff in this building and in the town, you know, we like to keep these people. And in the past, whatever the union negotiation was, that's what everybody got for a raise, no matter what you're doing, good or bad. So now we are, we took the non-union people out of that race so we can evaluate them and give them the raise based on their work performance, and I think it will enhance...
Does that come both ways? Did we, didn't all the non-unions get less of a raise than the unions?
They, last year we did, but we did do the adjustment of schedules, so we worked with everybody. Yeah, sometimes you got to look beyond...
I'm just saying that if we're going to take that thing, then they should be able to make more than the union too, if they're acceptable.
If they are acceptable, and that did.
Absolutely.
That's why, because we didn't let people really go into the extreme and get in the same raises somebody who's just getting by.
Right.
We want to be able to reward the people doing a job and give them incentive for this person to improve.
And I would have liked to have done that last year, it's just I really didn't have the time with also getting familiar with the town myself and everything else, just to go into that full evaluation. Now that I'll have, I've, coming up September 14th, I'll have a full year under my belt, and surprisingly, I don't have a full, we had quite a bit of turnover as far as some of our key positions, so, you know, but we, I've gotten to know everybody, we've gotten to know strengths and that, so I think that this year, it's definitely what we can do this year.
I also, there's three data points that have kind of worried me frankly in the past few months. One was the difficulty we had hiring, you know, the mechanic. The second was the, that we got zero applicants for the harvester, and the third was how we got relatively few applicants, or maybe it was actually zero, I'm not sure, on the police officer. You know, I mean, I know that we ended up, he recruited, I think he recruited or promoted Chad or whatever.
Ended up hiring within.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, but we didn't get a whole lot of applicants. And I think we need to wrap our heads around the idea of really two things, one, that filling positions is getting tougher. I mean, these are good jobs, these are jobs with benefits, with, you know, health, with dental, with a pension.
We are...
Let me just finish, let me just finish. And, and the second thing is, I think that around that, it becomes all that much more important that retention is a real priority of the town, because we don't want to be in a position where we have to fill a whole lot of these positions, you know, and so, you know, I think that these evaluations, and especially the ones that we find to be exemplary, we really want to be strategic about how we, you know, use compensation to, you know, retain.
I think Mike did a very good job in doing that, in terms of adjusting people's schedules, I mean, that is part of, that enhances people's willingness to be here, it makes them happy if, if they're still covering their position, and they're happy with the days of the week that they work, or their hours, then they're a happy employee. And so there are other ways to compensate people and make them be very satisfied in their jobs, so I think we're lucky, and we definitely want to retain.
We want to hire paid towns for all our departments.
We're very...
We're very, we're high in the pay scale for our departments.
I think, I think once the government's... I'm predicting though, that my, my prediction is that some of our surrounding towns will get desperate, and as they get desperate, they are going to start raising the offers. And we just should be prepared in the back of our mind for making sure we don't get caught, you know.
And I'll agree with that, Patrick, so I go, I've always come from the philosophy that, that you, people leave because of money, and they leave because they're not happy. If both are happening, not much you can do about it. If you want to at least address one, ideally, you want to address both.
Right.
And that's where a focus of raises to alter, you know, alternative schedules and things like that, if you hit both and people are happy and they're making a good pay on their position, then they're not even going to look elsewhere. So, and that's what we need to encourage. Now, some of the things, I know the officer that did leave, that was, that had nothing to do with not being happy, you know, it was just family decision to move back to, and that's...
This is another element of, of any evaluation, is also getting the feedback from the employee and finding out where they might have a problem with some responsibility, or how it's being done, and being able to address those kinds of concerns, because those are day-to-day frustrations that weigh on people, and they wear them down. And it's another reason that people can become unhappy in their job, it doesn't mean they hate their job, it just means there's some element that's just bugging them every day, so.
Maybe when the government starts, stops paying people for staying home, and get some employees coming in.
They already stopped September 4th, it's around the corner.
Recruitment is difficult right now.
And if anybody's staying home because they're being paid $300 a week for the government, rather than taking a job that pays 80 grand and gets you a pension, then that person is not only poor, but they're dumb, okay, you know, so.
But it's a universal problem.
Yeah, it is right now, yes.
Can we get evaluated? We're employees.
We need a lot of you evaluated.
Or is it just the voters?
Yeah, we get evaluated by voters.
And, and I would though like to say that, you know, and mine would be very positive, but I do think we should, you know, town council, I don't know if that's considered a contract employee, but I do think that at some point, we should do an evaluation there, it's like, it's, it's one of those important relationships that, you know, we should include in the evaluation hopper.
Okay. All righty, moving on, weed harvesting. Now, weed harvesting, we really have to talk about since we've had the incident, whether or not we want to put the second harvester out on the lake to do harvesting, and, or do we want to just not do that, but still maybe put it out there to take care of the Josh Billings prior to Josh Billings? So, you gentlemen have opinions on this?
What's the...
Fattis number two.
Fattis number two, what's the cost to get it up and running, what's the timeframe?
It should be ready to go, we're sun over there, it's ready to go, so the only issue is moving it, it's going to have to have RW's move it, you know, back and forth, we don't have the ability to move it ourselves, so.
So really, the question becomes, as Chairman put it, do we just do the one cut for the Josh Billy and then call it quits for this year?
And buy everybody around the lake a sixth.
Yeah, because is it worth it to do this? Do we have any idea what the cost would be? Josh is the...
19, yeah.
Pretty soon.
So two weeks.
All kidding aside, I absolutely think we should put it on for the, for the Josh. The Josh is, I think, a source of pride for the town, and they have other options, as they found the year we had cyanobacteria, and the leadership of the Josh has asked us to make sure that if there's any way we can get the weeds, I hate that term weeds, the nuisance vegetation or just vegetation cut back a little bit, it'd be great, you know, it, you know, we had, we had an incident 25 years ago when someone was actually practicing for the Josh, capsized in the weeds and drowned, and I think that it, it's important if we're going to host this thing that we, you know, both for safety and for aesthetics and, you know, calling the race, that we get it on the lake.
Well, what is, what's the cost of RW's taking, taking it over and making it...
No, I can have that figure for you tomorrow.
Okay, and then where do we stand with the GPS unit? Do we know if the...
Well, it's in rice right now, I'll get it from you now to hook up, and we'll try it.
If that's not working, then it doesn't go on the lake.
Yeah, or we have to, we rent one.
Yeah, we're here just, it wasn't a few hundred dollars, we could buy one too.
Right, we buy another one, whatever we have to do.
Yeah, I could also contact this Dee from and just say, here's what's happened.
Right.
We want to do one more cut.
Is it out of the rice now?
No, I'll take it out.
Before we do buy another one, if you, talk to my friend Russ Spalangere, the Bass Pro guy, he had some ideas on how we could improve on the functionality of that, that was the one that was pretty hard to use, you know, just the glare and, you know, we have much better options for that.
We would make sure we could legally put it in the lake, so that's, I guess really the only, the only thing is, do you want us to try to go back to regular, when did you do the regular harvesting through anyways? Was it usually through?
Remember.
No, when, we would harvest right before the Josh, and that'd be it.
Yeah, that's kind of the end of the season.
The thing is that, that Michael often argued that we should do one last harvest at the end of October, because it would really clean up the lake in the spring to have all that, that stuff is basically, you know, kind of hangs out all winter if you don't get rid of it, you know. I would, Mike, Michael Nathan is the one who's done the most harvesting, I think, of anyone on our team, and, you know, I'd suggest you get his opinion.
I think maybe we should talk to Mark Viola.
Yeah, he's done two, so.
Town employee also, but has done, did it for many years.
So would you, no matter what, you want to do the Josh, and then we can bring back for the next selectmen's meeting, which is next Thursday, the cost of whether or not we want to do, try to do more than just one more cut.
Right.
All right.
Well, getting it, getting it, look, you got to pay the guy to get it, you got to pay the company to bring it there and take it out. It doesn't matter whether we do one cut or five cuts, you know, it...
Oh, all right, it's only...
It's just a one-shot deal, because it stays in the water, you take it out.
That's what it's going to cost us, that's all.
I'll bring that back for the next, we'll get that and have it for next...
It's part of the insurance claim.
Yeah. It actually might...
Yeah, I know.
Could be, yeah.
Bill wants to say something, Roxanne.
Wondering what the status of the submarine harvester is? I saw it in the, in the garage, but also, I would just say, if there's anything you can do to continue to improve the, or, or actually make the weed situation in the lake better, I would support, you know, we're, it is just, it is so bad this year, after us, last year where nothing happened, you know, and this year where we had a couple of nice flights from the green, the blue harvester, we had the, the green monster back, we'd be very happy.
All right, thank you.
Can that big one go down the channel?
I don't know if that one's been down the channel, has it?
I don't know.
Mark will know.
I think Nixon was president when that thing was made, but...
Yeah, but Mark will know, because Mark's familiar with it.
All right, we'll plan on coming back to the board for next, next week's meeting with numbers, everything else, and what it would take to get it up there, and what we need to do. Anita has put up her hand.
Anita, are you out there?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Hi.
Thanks, Roxanne, hi, and thanks for getting the harvester out and hopefully back out again. I'm just curious, do you know what caused it to tip? I mean, I'm grateful that no one was injured, but has it been fixed so that that doesn't happen again when you put it back out in the lake?
The main thing is that no one was hurt, that's the primary, most important thing here, and it's still under investigation, and we'll be following up, why am I going blank on name?
Chuck.
Chuck is in Nantucket, and when Chuck gets back, we'll be having a follow-up meeting to try to better determine what might have caused this. But I have talked to Aquarius Systems, and yes, occasionally, they do capsize, and there's a variety of reasons why that can happen, but at this point, it's still under investigation for this incident.
I think it was, it was a really strong moon, and the tides did it.
I'm glad he was able to jump and swim, that was...
Thank God.
Unless he got off, yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would like to suggest that we, that we approve, that we approve conditionally putting the green harvester on the lake unless the chairman feels the cost is too high, and then it comes back to the board in a week. I don't, I would rather not lose another week as we deliberate and get numbers. If it's something that you're comfortable with, I would be more than happy to just, you know, streamline this process and get it out there, and if you're not comfortable, then come back and we can talk about it.
Oh, I don't think it's a matter of money, quite frankly, I mean, I don't think that's the issue, and I'm perfectly happy to get it out there. I don't know, how do you feel, Chuck?
As long as the GPS is on and working, and we're staying within the guidelines of...
Like I said, I, I'd rather, I'd rather the town have permission to go forward, unless they feel they can't, then they come back and talk to us.
All right.
Okay.
Work on getting a GPS order, we'll work on getting the company to move it.
Let's see if this one works, this one might be okay.
Can we inflate the tires on this one?
All right, any other comments from the public? Anyone else?
I am not seeing any hands up at this point.
Okay. So, hearing none, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.